Roger, you want to lead us in pledge? Thank you. Roll call.
Frank Scott.
Chair.
Mark Serbuk.
Present.
Roosevelt.
Present.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Jenny David.
Here. A approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So can.
Mr. Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, declarations of conflicts of interest. Commissioners, any?
None.
Go ahead now.
Item four, review of minutes. July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed them. I'll make a motion to accept them as as presented. Oh. Well, I'm sorry. One little thing on the agenda today. It should say noon, not five thirty, but anyway, I'll make a motion to accept the minimum. The part.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four B, August seventh, twenty twenty five, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes. Make a motion we support them.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltie.
Support.
Commissioner Scott, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four C, August seventh, twenty twenty five, closed session meeting minutes.
Motion to accept as presented. The point.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, public comment on agenda. Item matters only. Any public comment in the room? Not if you guys know the rules? I'll give them to you. There's rules for public comments. Let's see, there are lists here. State your name for the record. Speak only. Airperson, stand behind the podium when speaking, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. I believe you're what you are on the agenda. You'll have an opportunity to speak that as well with questions. I'm going to give the commissioners opportunity to speak to you guys as well at that time.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay.
Okay, that's okay. Go ahead.
All right. So I am here as a strong advocate for our resource officer that we have and our relationship that we've built between the sheriff's department and the school. When we talk about that SRO, that school resource officer, it's very different from what we would get if we had a private security firm, our company come in and just knowing that we're partners in prevention with our sheriff's department. We try, there's a lot of talk in the school communities about the prison to pipeline or the pipeline, school to prison pipeline. And we're working to break that cycle. You'll hear from others that how much that officer has done in building relationships. And when we talk about some of the schools, the Oxford School shooting, and when I went to the Homeland Security Conference, they talked about how quickly that happens, how quickly the shootings happen, and it's more prevention versus reaction. So I feel like we are very preventative. We have the officers in our building, they're able to go through our building, help us with our emergency operations plan, our crisis plans for each building, and help us through those drills as well as work to build those relationships with our students. So I just wanted to make sure that I came and advocated for our school resource officer. And with the funding that we use, it's a grant fund from through the state. It all speaks to school resource officer, not necessarily a security firm. So we would have to make sure that if we that we could use that. The eighty-five thousand dollars that we pay for that resource officer, that we would have that through grant funding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna have some questions for you when we get to that resolution. So you plan on sticking around?
I will.
Okay. Any other? Public comment up, sir? Your name?
Jason Polarski, Assistant Principal at Ogma Heights. I'm going to set my timer for three minutes.
It's okay. I'll let you know.
Yeah, you will.
You have the floor.
As I said, my name is Jason Polarski. I'm the Assistant Principal at Ogma. I work in this community, but I do not live here yet. And I hope to offer different perspectives since I'm a bit of an outsider. On February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, voters in the county passed the Ogma County Sheriff's Office Road Patrol Village Renewal Proposal. This was to increase law enforcement presence in our community with twenty-four seven road coverage. The people of Ogma trust their sheriff and see the benefit of having those men and women out serving the community at all times. However, it has come to my attention that due to this proposal, Ogma Heights High School, as well as Woodmore Prescott and Rose City, would lose their SRO sheriff's presence. I can say with the utmost confidence that this would not only be a great disservice to those school communities in the moment, by extension, the communities around them, but also the communities for years to come. The community may have wanted twenty-four seven road coverage, but it is doubtful they would have approved of it if they knew it meant losing their officers in local schools. SROs make a difference. I've seen that. I had the opportunity to work with Deputy Ryan Gilbert, Jr., for what will soon be three years. In that time, I can tell you without question, he has made a difference at our school and as a result, Ogma County as well. Students look forward to seeing Deputy Gilbert. For many, he is their person that keeps them coming to school. They ask when he's not there. They look for him when they need someone to talk to that they can trust. They listen to the advice he gives. I've seen numerous students graduate that have had the cards stacked against them. Family and friends, other acquaintances told them that they would not succeed in their chosen career or that they weren't cut out for college. Yet I have seen those young men and women move into dream careers or even start college. Why is that? One of the reasons is our SRO. When others didn't believe in these students, he was there to offer guidance and sometimes a gentle push. I've had numerous students tell me he is the reason they tried their senior year and ended up graduating. Deputy Gilbert will see these kids, these adults, for many more years to come after they leave us diploma in hand. He could be the face that they need to see when life is going wrong and they're about to make some bad decisions. He could be one of the reasons that they feel comfortable sending their own children to Ogma Heights. When I say this would have lasting repercussions for years to come, I mean it. Since the passing of that ballot measure, the Michigan State Legislature has also been at work and passed House Bill five, four, five, seven, seven. It states that schools must have an SRO by October first, twenty twenty five. In short, to have our SRO out of our schools would hamstring these schools of their security and their relationship. I ask you to consider these things when determining the placement for our community officers for the upcoming school years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? Item six, correspondence, correspondence from Ogma Ascotak Conservation District Local Work Group. While the ants meeting minutes on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, meeting notice, those have been received and filed. Consent agenda. Commissioners?
One at a time, please.
Really? Yeah, can I combine a few of these? Remoneration invitations? Which? C and E?
I think A three.
I really do too, right? I think that Mr. Bowers has explained the emergency preparedness grant very thoroughly.
A through E, you're saying?
Yes.
Just give me one. Give me a minute.
Who is the?
Item say, and seven A, resolution to enter into settlement agreement and intercounty cost sharing agreement to resolve pending litigations as related to our closed session meeting minutes. Item seventy, resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. Item seven C, resolution to approve the Ogma County Building Emergency Action. Item seventy, resolution to approve, to approve remonumentation program survey or services agreement. Item seven E, resolution to approve remonument, remonumentation program county representative agreement.
I'd really like to add J, K, and L to that. I don't, I think we can do this with the elevator conflict, the waiver of conflict with using the same attorneys and the appointment to the zoning Board of Appeals, especially then it was not contested. It was one person. Last three, the last three.
Not seven, uh, no, you'll.
Just take two.
I'm fine with that.
Seven J, resolution to approve elevator service and repair order. Seven K, resolution to approve waiver of conflict and consent to representation regarding housing Ogma County prisoners in Ogma County Jail. Item seven I, resolution to appoint a member to the Ogma County Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm sorry.
I, I is different. L.
Okay, yes, sorry about that. Seven L. So we have on here item seven A, item seven B, item seven C, item seven D, item seven E, item seven J, item seven K, and item seven L.
Make the motion to to consent that opportunity to the agenda, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk. Discussion? Any commissioners?
Well, I, I think those things, we thoroughly discussed them and we got all the information from the people that we needed to hear from. I don't know why we just can't consent to them.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk. Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wildt.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Item seven F, resolution to revise the fiscal year twenty twenty five position allocation list. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. On December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-four dash one four zero to establish one regular part-time animal control officer position. Upon review of the workload and assigned to this position, the board wishes to reclassify the animal control officer position as full time. Approval of the resolution would amend the position allocation list to recognize the animal control officer as a full-time position and would authorize the necessary budgetary transfers within the animal control fund.
Make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltie? Is there any support? Any support for this? Tim? We have a motion, no support.
Definitely.
Item seven G, resolution to authorize funds for sheriff's office vehicle purchase. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The sheriff's office currently utilizes a fleet of twenty-one vehicles for road patrol, corrections, transport, animal control, and seasonal operations. On September eighth, twenty twenty, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-three dash one two five to accept a U.S. Department of Agricultural Community Facilities Program Grant for purchase two vehicles at a cost of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, including a required sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven county match. It is necessary to order vehicles as soon as possible to ensure delivery in fiscal year twenty twenty six and to meet the USDA grant deadline. Approval of the resolution will authorize the sheriff's office to identify and secure purchases of two vehicles and two vehicles consistent with provisions of the USDA Community Facilities Program Grant in a manner consistent with the purchasing procedures policy. It is understood that the vehicle will be purchased with funds to be allocated in the fiscal year twenty twenty six road patrol village budget.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolutions presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Serbuk?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Further discussion?
Sure. Can we have the sheriff come up?
Come on up.
I guess, Sheriff, we got a, we got an email from Paul the other day.
Yep.
With the prices on, on the cars and stuff and and you guys have the Tahoe is preferred. Yeah, is what's in the letter.
Prefer the towels for sure.
And I'm looking at the differences here. I, I myself would like to purchase the towels. And I'd like to have that included within, within the motion.
I support that.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, well.
I know you're supporting what you're saying about the.
Right, right, right. I, yeah, makes me. Yeah. That, that, I, I believe you've always said the larger the vehicles, that, that's helpful, and I like that idea, so.
Comment, Sheriff?
I, I agree with that. I think that would, that would benefit us.
Questions for the sheriff? Roll call vote. Thank you.
And with that.
I would, I would, I would support the amendment that Commissioner Scott did in regards of.
Did you want to amend your resolution?
Well, it's his resolution. He made the resolution. I only supported.
So I'm sorry. I did write that. Serbuk can say that.
Yep. I will amend it to identify the specific vehicles of Sheriff Roy Towles.
And I would support.
We have a motion with support. Tim, did you have something to add to that?
Just exactly what just happened. So you'll want to vote on the amendment and then vote on the resolution.
Roll call vote.
Charles Wildt.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes.
No, we need to vote on the actual resolution. We voted on the amendment. We voted on the amended resolution.
Ready?
Uh, yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Right.
So for a second, for a second.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry, thank you. Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Roosevelt.
Yes.
Item seven H, resolution to accept Office of Highway Safety Planning Secondary to Road Patrol Grant. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The Office of Highway Safety Planning is responsible for administering the Secondary Road Patrol and Traffic Accident Prevention Fund. In each fiscal year, fifteen million dollars of the proceeds deposited in the state treasury for taxes on the retail selling price of spirits must be allocated to the Secondary Road Patrol and Training Fund. Approval of the resolution will authorize acceptance of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty six for use on secondary roads for the following services. Patrolling and monitoring traffic violations, enforcing the criminal laws of the state, violations of which are observed by or brought to the attention of the sheriff's office while providing services, investigating accidents involving motor vehicles, providing emergency assistance to persons on or near a highway or road patrol.
Make a motion that we accept the resolution as presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Serbuk?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion?
It is lower than last year, but it does fund most of the positions, so I think we need to take it.
Any other comments? Roll call vote. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wildt.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Item seven I, resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty five Ogma County budget. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahanny. On September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution twenty-four dash nine zero to approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty five. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that local units of the government periodically adjust the budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. Approval of the resolution will authorize and acknowledge general fund revenue decreases of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and expenditures increases of seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The resolution also approves budget adjustments for twenty-eight of forty-four special funds.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution.
Support.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk. Discussion? I did ask Tim to have, maybe, I don't know if you want to do it, maybe Committee of the Whole, or at least put it on our iPads for just a little better breakdown as far as last year to this year with the Corrections Department, with the changes that have taken place.
Right. Since we discussed that, I remembered that after each of these quarterly adjustments, you have a handout that we've been updating. So I'll make sure that gets done and gets distributed.
Questions, comments?
No, I don't see anything that's so drastic for this.
Looks pretty good, actually.
We had these all pretty much in their budget advisory committee meetings, so I think that they're good.
Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wildt.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Item eight, new business. Item eight A, resolution to certify Ogma County Representatives to the MERS twenty twenty five Retirement Conference. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahanny. The Municipal Employees Retirement System MERS Business Meeting will be held in conjunction with the Seventy-Ninth Annual Retirement Conference on October sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Section forty-five two of the MERS Plan document requires that the governing body of each member municipality must certify an employee delegate who has been nominated and elected by other employee members and appoint an officer delegate of the governing body. Approval of the resolution will certify Deputy County Clerk Ashley Lynch as employee delegate and Chief Deputy County Clerk Tracy Turner as officer delegate representing Ogma County.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution. Support.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltie, support from Commissioner Mayhew. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight B, resolution to approve school resource deputy agreements. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. Ogma County Sheriff's Office is willing and able to provide school resource supplemental law enforcement services to the West Branch, Rose City area schools and to the Woodmore Prescott area schools. Through cooperative education enforcement efforts, the school resource deputy program strives to assist the schools with providing a safe school and neighborhood environment. Approval of the resolution will provide a school resource deputy to each school district for a period of one year at a cost of eighty-five thousand dollars annually paid by the school district.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution to approve the school resource deputy agreement. Support.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltie. Support from Commissioner Serbuk. Discussion? You want to come on up? Mrs. Huey?
Don't forget to say my name last night.
Did I? I know who you are.
Brought your nameplate.
Um, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate your comments, your information. That is very much appreciated. Is your grant, does that require an MCO's certified officer?
That is what I'm not sure of. We tried to call our consultant from the state to check on that, but I did not get an answer yet.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Huey?
I'd like to make a statement. We're public bodies. I can't, I cannot call up Commissioner Wiltie and tell him an idea I got and ask him what his opinion is and then turn around and call another member on the phone and ask them. That is a quorum. I can only if I have an idea about something, I can talk to one, but I can't talk to another. Um, we have to bring this stuff up in public meetings. It scares the living heck out of people. They all of a sudden think that we passed something. I, it's transparency. It's called government and it's called transparency. And you have to bring up, if you got an idea about something, you have to bring it up in public. And you have to bring it up in a, in a public meeting. And this happens over and over and over again. I, I'm surprised and I'm surprised of the the Facebook wars that went on last week in, in some parts of the county. And I know I'm speaking to the TV when I say this because there's people out there that's explaining stuff on, on the, on the Facebook about it. And it's like, come on. I it's, it's an idea. Now, past and past commissioners brought this up. Commissioner Simmons was here in the last term. She brought up the idea then. Because we have not filled twenty-four seven in three, four years now? And it's like, you know, and, and as I've said many times, I was not in favor even putting on a ballot because I didn't want to hamstring anybody to a certain number. So it was an idea. It was an idea. It was never voted on until about three minutes from now, we're going to vote on it.
Can I say as another public entity?
Sure.
I completely understand.
I think you do. I think you do. And there's other public entities out there. I really thought they understood, but they don't seem to because, you know.
But I did want to come and share.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I really do. And I appreciate that from your whole panel. I mean, yes, we, we like to hear that. I mean, I make it a point at all my public meetings that I say that you can come to our meetings anytime and you can zoom our meetings anytime that we're on, and then you can even watch them tomorrow on YouTube. And if there's something, you know, like you can, that I happen to maybe say, you can call me up and tell me because my phone is on the county website. You know? And you know my name very well.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Commissioner Wiltie.
I appreciate you being here. I feel it's very important to keep these officers in the school.
Thank you. I appreciate that too.
Mr. Mayhew. Mr. Serbuk.
I just want to say to everybody, I don't think it was the intent of any commissioner sitting up here to not fund the school resource officers. This whole thing just blew up. As Commissioner Scott said, you know, there was some comment made and then people just ran with it. And I have told anybody that I have talked to, including the three townships I represent, their boards, that I don't believe it was ever the intent of anybody sitting up here to eliminate school resource officers.
Thank you.
So
Good to hear.
Things just, as they happen, somebody hears one thing and they grab it and they run and it's all misinterpretation, so I'm done, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm gonna say, I appreciate that this is brought up. This has been brought up. I did receive numerous phone calls last week, which I greatly appreciate, looking for actual factual information. The biggest misconception was as far as who pays for this resource officer? And, and you made the statement that that is a grant, the school funds it, Ogma County does not fund that. So that is one, that is one fact now that is out there. The other issue, just so you know what position that we are in, is we are in a very complex and difficult situation. The voters voted on it, passed a village three years ago.
It was in tw- or twi- year of the.
For twenty-four seven, wrote not that this pertains to you, but this is related to the officers that we're, we're talking about. It takes two officers off of our street and puts them in the schools, which I think is extremely important. Yes, we need to keep our, our kids safe. Hundred percent. Our voters also voted on twenty-four seven road patrol. Unfortunately, majority of the time, they have not been receiving those services. We have to go to township meetings once a month and we are asked, at least I'm speaking for myself here and the rest of you have concurred, we are asked about this coverage at every single meeting nonstop. We have to go back to them and report, you know, we're down officers. We had two officers in the schools, which I don't think anybody disagrees with. It's just we're in a very complex situation. I'm trying to find a solution and expedite the solution so we can say going back confidently that they are getting the services that they're paying for. Puts us in a very difficult situation. I wanted to ask that gentleman, I mean, you, you spoke specifically about an officer repeatedly. Are you advocating for that officer? Or are you advocating for that position? Because I was a little confused by that.
Well, I like the individual officer that we do have. The position is the most important aspect for me.
That's what I, okay. That was my question. It would, Woodmore Prescott, it's very, is there any representatives here from Woodmore Prescott? In the room?
Maybe on the phone?
I, I, I'm asking in the room that they're here. First, what's that?
Did talk to Brian Crainer last night.
Okay.
And he was able to attend the meeting, so, but he felt very much that he was an advocate and needed that support, especially with their location being even farther from any enforcement.
Pretty isolated.
Tim, did you, did you hear word from any of them?
No.
Is there anybody on the phone from Woodmore Prescott, either the school system, the school board? That is able to speak?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, Commissioner Wiltie.
I had two school board representatives from Woodmore Prescott reach out to me from Mills Township. And they both were very concerned by the fact that maybe the school resource officer wouldn't be there. So they sounded those two and then their board really support the fact that the officer being at Woodmore Prescott.
Is there any school representative on the phone from Woodmore Prescott? I received a few conversations with Woodmore Prescott individuals as well. And, and their biggest, I guess question was who funds this position? So that's what I wanted them to clarify on the phone. So everybody here is.
question was who funds this position? So that's what I wanted them to clarify on the phone. So everybody here as well. Um, that seemed to be a, a, a big, and they also advocated for, they're very happy with their officer over there, very, very pleased with their officer. So, any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary, can you come up? Before we make this very crucial decision and, and let us know where you're at with twenty-four seven road patrol. So we're all on the same page.
I've got an individual who's going to start the academy on Monday, so that'll, that'll get us that full staff. Right when we get him through the Delta Academy, then he's going to be field trained. But I do have a field training officer up on night, so I could kind of slip them up there periodically. So that would fulfill that, that B rotation. So uh, we're moving forward. It's just difficult to find people that want to be a police officer at this day and age. So I think we, uh, we might, we might be good. So this individual that's going to go to the academy is from Ogmao County. He's invested here in this county, so I don't believe he's going to go anywhere. So I think it's good money that we're, we're going to support him and get him through this academy.
He starts the academy this upcoming Monday, correct? And he will graduate in December.
Yeah.
And then he's got training. I'm just putting this out there so everybody hears it. And then he graduates in December if all goes well, which it sounds like he, he will hopefully. Um, and then he's got training and before he's out on his own. So you're looking at that position truly being filled until probably rough February, March.
Probably by himself. You got a fifteen week academy, then you got fifteen week FTO program. But within that fifteen week FTO program, he's going to be moved around. Uh, he'll be doing some night patrol, which will, which will increase our night patrol by that B rotation will be filled because I'll move the FTO officer to him and then that would give two in the, two in the vehicles. So just do some shifting. We'll, we'll, we'll get it to happen. But, um, this individual is a military, uh, individual. So I, I got pretty good confidence that he's going to do well.
I'm not asking for any specifics, um, but I am asking, I guess, right now out of a fourteen day period, how many nights are covered twenty-four seven?
Half of them.
Okay. Are you still doing on call?
Yes.
Twenty-four. So somebody's, when they're on call, are they clocked in?
They will if they get called out.
Only if they're called out.
Right, right.
Questions for the sheriff?
I have no questions.
Mr. Serbrook?
No.
Mr. Mayhew.
I mean, last night we, we was pressed pretty hard. They want to know why we're collecting the millage because they ain't getting what they want. And it, it was pretty intense.
What, what township was that?
West Bridge.
Yeah, they, they, they are not happy. I mean, and we've explained it to you a couple of times, but yeah, we're, we're jumping pretty hard when we go to these meetings about it.
West Bridge Township feels very strongly because, you know, they are contracted with the city and they feel that they are being neglected by the Ogmao County Sheriff's Office. And they are paying the same amount of taxes as everybody else. So they're and it's not just the people that sit on that board. There was an audience there and they, that audience expressed the same concerns. That they're not seeing Sheriff's and West Branch Township.
Comment.
Like they used to.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Um, this obviously is a very important topic to all of us. Um, the good thing is though, uh, moving forward, we have seen an increase. I know it has helped this summer with the school resource officers being able to be on the road, but Deputy Kennedy, correct? He's our last hire. That was not that long ago. We have another academy, another, um, deputy starting academy. I understand. I think the sheriff and the other sheriff realize the importance of this. We are seeing the data and the data shows that there has been an increase in coverage. So I'm staying optimistic that, uh, we'll continue to get close and soon to be at twenty-four seven. So that being said, we also need to tell our constituents that we have seen a consistent rise in coverage. Nothing's perfect. We weren't where we were at and we are making increases. So that is good and I appreciate it.
It, it made me a little nervous there saying seven, seven out of fourteen days. I did see the data that Tim gave us, but I am going to have to look a little further into that. So I, I, this is a very difficult decision. Um, I think for all of us to vote on, I'm a hundred percent in favor of a school officer. I, I think we all needed to say what we have to say. And I think the sheriff is headed in the right direction. Um, I think you have a right to know how concerned the public is with us. Um, and of course they act differently when you're standing in these township meetings compared to when they were there without a representative for the sheriff's office. So I was on the fence about this, but, uh, again, I think our, our kids' safety is, is top priority, but, uh, this just puts us in a very complex situation. So please, moving forward, try very diligently to get officers out there so we can go back there and say they're, they're covering these roads. Because they're getting ready to pay their taxes and they're very unhappy. Any other comments?
Go for it.
Roll call vote.
Thank you. Charles Voltsi.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Item seven Z, resolution to authorize a letter of intent to apply for Consumers Energy Foundation twenty-twenty-five Prosperity Award. This resolution is sponsored by District Five County Commissioner Craig Scott. Consumers Energy Foundation Prosperity Awards will provide as much as two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to two or more Michigan nonprofits, municipalities, or Indian tribal governments aiming to support economic development and improve the welfare of whole communities with a particular focus on funding projects with long-term benefits. Approval of the resolution will authorize the county administrator slash controller to submit a letter of intent to express interest in applying for a twenty-twenty-five Prosperity Award on behalf of Ogmao County.
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Support.
Are you able to since you sponsor it?
Yeah.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support for Commissioner Serbrook. Would you like to take the floor on this?
Yeah, this is, this is to do with our Parks and Rec Committee. And, uh, Consumers Power is, uh, um, offering this grant out there uh, to, for arts and culture and things like that. And we'd like to see if we can get money toward the nature park for, for the county nature park. And our focus is going to be ADA compliant, uh, disability, American Disabilities Act compliant, compliant, compliant. We want to be able to, we'd like to put in a paved walking path that would take us inside the park and all the way around so that, uh, uh, handicapped people can go in and observe the deer and the wildlife and stuff like that. We had our parks and our meeting this morning up there at the park and looked it over. Uh, the committee isn't all in agreeance. Let's try to get this. Uh, this is the same grant that the city won, uh, for what do you call that? The gathering place park right down the street here by the railroad tracks. So they won it last year or the year before. And so thinking that, that it was close enough local like that, that we got a good chance of it. So, uh, and then also our hall up there has non-compliant ADA bathrooms in it. And we've had some drawings done and we're been looking for a, a contractor. Um, and maybe some of this money can be used for that and we could have compliant bathrooms. It was just when they were built back in the fifties, probably out of concrete block, which makes it very difficult to, um, modify. Um, it was okay back then. So we're asking, we're asking, uh, the commissioners to authorize a letter of intent and apply for this grant.
And that's all this is just a, a letter of, you know, that we're, they're going to apply for it. So there isn't anything.
I had read about it a couple of weeks ago. Rich Castle sent out a email related to this grant. Uh, he's pretty good at sending information.
Very good. Um,
Yeah.
He sends out a lot of good information.
He does. And any available funding? Uh, any further questions? Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Danny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Voltsi.
Yes.
Item seven, uh, D, claims. Claims total this week was seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. I'll make a motion to approve claims.
Or?
Motion with support from Commissioner Wiltie. Discussion. Commissioner Wiltie and I reviewed claims. Commissioner Wiltie, you want to take the floor?
There's a few questions I had that I'm going to look into. Um, other than that, uh, you know, just looking at that Consumers Energy bill. Such a huge number. I know our utility costs continue to rise and we've made sacrifices and financial commitments to boilers and new windows and, you know, it's going to be really nice to see down the road here sooner or later when we can start tracking the data to hopefully see some some large increases in, uh, cost savings. But then again, that's going to hard, hard to have those cost savings when this price of utilities continue to go up at such a high percentage. But we still made the right decision. Um, just alarming to see such a high number for those costs. Uh, other than that, like I said, I got a few questions. I'm going to look into those. Um, that's all I got.
I wrote down a few things. Claims were pretty intense. Took me over an hour to sit there for a while. Uh, ARPA funds window, the lighting, uh, bill was eighty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. I, I'm going to concur with Commissioner Wiltie. Things are looking pretty good out there. It looks like they're doing an excellent job. Uh, just some circuit court, um, things, uh, thirty-nine day, just so the public is aware, thirty-nine day detention center costs eleven-thousand, three-hundred-and-ten dollars. Uh, partners and change their partnership, twelve-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Um, I had a question. Veterans special fund, there was a, a bill in there for T-shirts for fifteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Do you know anything about that?
Those veterans?
Yeah.
Be a good question for.
Funded. I just, it just looked like a lot of money for T-shirts. Jeff, are you on the phone? There you are. It didn't say anything specific. It just said T-shirts. Jeffrey, we can't hear you if you're trying. Uh, treasurer's title searches, eleven-thousand, seven-hundred dollars. There is elections reimbursements, uh, to the counties that I know the school is covering. You wrote that right on there for twenty-seven-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars.
And we already got the check.
Uh, electric bills that, that Commissioner Wiltie, sixteen thousand dollars for this building, the old jail, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Uh, legal fees. There was like a lot of zoning ordinance enforcement. What was that?
So when we get into an enforcement action, that's not something that's covered under the retainer that we have. It was spelled out in our contract. So if there is, um, you know, additional research and if there were, um, trying to remember some, um, so I said rather intense business activities going on in some residential areas that, um, needed some additional attention. Um, you did probably recall too, a few months ago, uh, opened up the county prosecutor to follow up on those where needed. So what they're doing right now is in effect, building that case. So should there need to be an enforcement action that would involve the prosecutor or any kind of court action, all of the necessary background will be done, uh, before it's actually filed. So it is a work in progress right now. I know they have some, uh, notices of non-compliance that have gone out. Um, and so these may be some charges you'll be seeing in the future as well.
There were some charges on there as well from our attorneys for travel time to hearings. Uh, there was quite a bit from our attorneys. I had totals on there. Um, elections, I said that. Emergency manager, there was a seven-thousand dollars active shooter. Was that reimbursable?
Oh, yes, that's a hundred percent.
I assumed it was.
Excuse me. A hundred percent reimbursed.
Okay, I assumed it was. Uh, the jail consumers bill was five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. Immate housing, I've just been reporting this when I'm doing claims. We had three of them on there. Uh, the largest was Gladwin, nineteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. There was an eleven-fifty-two. Um, and then I think that might've been, um, either Aronak or Osco. And then the other one was Claire, I think for thirty-eight, eighty-five, three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Uh, the police, I seen the police academy on there. Uh, the local audit for the transit, it was from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one for eight, I can't read my writing very well, eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Why is that twenty-twenty-one? Why is it just?
Uh, it might be a typo.
Oh, it's a local bus, um, operations audit, eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars transit fiscal year twenty-one.
Um, that might not be our audit per se. It might be an audit that M. Dot puts them through, uh, for compliance purposes, just be guessing at this point.
Um, I, I didn't write the ME on there. That's, uh, there was a few autopsies and things on there. I want to ask for a little better clarification on there just because there, it's kind of interesting to look at, but it's got natural, it's got a couple of different columns. So I am going to reach out to them and ask them for a little better breakdown. There's a cost, cost difference and I didn't write down how much it was. It wasn't much and there was quite a few services on there. So we're definitely saving some money there. Go ahead, Commissioner Wiltie.
Um, I also did have that fifteen thousand dollars in my, in my notes. I was going to talk to Tim, talk to Jeff, and I think there's, I would imagine some type of clerical error there. Um, I do have, uh, one question. Emergency management, Mike, you're here. Um, the two-thousand-three, thirty-three, thirty-three per month, is that a one-hundred percent Ogmao County responsibility or is that shared within your five county area for your salary?
Uh, that's, uh, the responsibility for Ogmao County.
The two-thousand-three, thirty-three?
Yes, sir. Uh, total of twenty-eight thousand dollars a year.
And, and you're working right now with five other counties?
Uh, I'm working currently now, I am only working with two other counties, uh, Aranaca and Osota County. And, uh, I am assisting, uh, the, uh, new full-time emergency management coordinator in Iasco County as he learns his position.
So that's your monthly salary with Ogmao County.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Is that it, Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, Tim Transit, uh, eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight for an LBO payback?
For a what payback?
LBO payback?
LBO.
I didn't.
Not sure with that acronym.
There was just another one I was going to ask if I figured if we're going to really get into this here. I'll send it to you and we'll find out. Okay. That's all I got.
I just tried to write a few things down so the public can be aware of costs and just some things that I find interesting going through all of them.
Yeah, no, it's good.
There was a courthouse grounds carpet too for seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars that, that's been ongoing for trying to do some renovations slowly, some upkeep. So for Morris Clark, yeah.
Ma'am, sure. In looking at the claims that are from transit for that ethos in there, it says state of Michigan on it. So I think that, I think Tim was correct that that was probably because the money's going to the state. So it was probably an M. Dot audit that they charged us for.
It just says twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, sometimes they'll track those with a grant year. So it might be right. It sounds like it's just a typo, but it might be a twenty-twenty-one grant they were auditing.
Oh, can we look into that? Make sure. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Voltsi.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item nine, unfinished business, audit proposal ranking. Tim?
Okay. Uh, as you recall, we had seven proposals come in for audit. This is a three-year commitment that we asked for in the RFP. That would be for the current fiscal year as well as fiscal years twenty, twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. Um, I am, um, really happy to, to say that, uh, the, all of the costs came in, uh, at a number less than what I had projected for the budget for next year. So that's a very positive thing. Each of the seven firms, uh, that submitted a proposal is certainly capable of doing the audit. I just want to lay that right out there. Uh, they've all had some experience with counties, some a lot more than others, but they've all demonstrated, uh, inability to do that. So before I get into the actual rankings and the treasurer and I sat down and, and went through each of these proposals in detail and came up with a number. Question for the board is, we do interviews. How many of them do you want to hear from? Uh, even limiting this to a fifteen-minute process for each applicant, you're looking at probably a two-hour commitment at a future committee, the whole meeting. Uh, and if you want to endure that much, that's great. We'll set it up. Uh, but I would suggest you may want to narrow that down to the top three or top five. And I would submit that the Stevens Center Company, who's been our auditor for many years, probably don't need to interview them. You could just, you know, consider them outright without talking, but that's totally up to you. Uh, we see them, uh, I've seen them every year for the last five. So very familiar with their process and, and how they go about their business. But what's your pleasure on, on a number?
How many did you feel out of the seven stood out?
Uh, five for sure did. If I needed to narrow it down to three, it's going to get tougher.
Karen, do you agree with that?
I'm happy with the top three that we agree on. I think three would be plenty for an interview process.
Commissioners opinions. Uh, Commissioner Wiltie.
I'm fine with five.
Commissioner. Sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Darren's, um, opinions weigh heavy with me. So if she's good with three on this topic, I'm good with three.
Commissioner Scott.
Good with three.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Three.
Three.
Commissioner Sorbuck?
Definitely three.
Right. Okay. Uh, the seven, I guess I should read this. Uh, received seven proposals for audit services in response to RFP number sixteen dash two-five. The proposals were evaluated for compliance with the mandatory requirements stated within the request for proposals. Treasurer Karen Pavlowski and Administrator slash Controller Timothy Dalahoney will present the rankings of the proposals. The board will then be asked to name which firms, if any, to invite a future meeting to formal present the proposals and to answer questions proposed by the board. Board may in its sole and absolute discretion reject any or all proposals submitted. I think we agree, three.
Okay, so here we are. Um, Erin and I agree with two on three. One of them is the Maynard Custerius and, uh, proposal. Uh, you're familiar with Maynard. They helped us with the internal controls, uh, over here, over the last couple of years. Uh, and we both agreed that on top three was, uh, Gavbridge and Company. That's, um, um, believe they're out of Grand Rapids. They, uh, have several counties in the state that they work with now. Uh, Karen's number three was the Shoals, Oswald, Miller and Edwards. They have a branch office in Rose City uh, and also an office in Alpena. Uh, I had, and here's where our discrepancy is. I had Raymond as one of my top three. Uh, they're a company that does audits in thirty counties right now. They've had association with, uh, forty-eight counties in the last ten years. And of course, we both agreed, uh, uh, on Stevenson is our, our fourth. And like I said, I don't know that you're going to gain anything more out of interviewing the auditor that you've had here for a number of years.
Make a comment.
Go ahead.
With what Tim just said, can we go to four?
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. Uh, I mean, let's go with the four and then the fifth is we'll just keep Stevenson on the back burner as number five, but I, 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 if, if something comes out of the four that we need to bring Stevenson to come in and fine tune and answer for us, that's fine too.
Right, we're aware that they're number five.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Two, three.
Commissioner Sorbuck?
I agree. I was going to suggest that before when I got brought up. So definitely it's a four, yes.
Uh, Karen, can you, can you, uh, okay, I guess can you guys briefly tell me what the discrepancy was? Like what your deciding point was here besides the two of them?
The only difference was because Schultz is out of Rose City to give a local firm an opportunity. I'm fine with you only, only, only want to do three. I'm fine with them and Gavbridge, Maynard and Raymond. I'm fine with those three. If you only want to do three, I threw them in because they do have a lot of experience and they're local.
They do Mills Township. They do a couple of my townships. Um, I think two of them. Do they do any counties?
They do. Um, I believe Preskill was one of the counties they listed and another county, uh, I think it was Mount Moretzee, not positive. But county in that area.
I really would like to stay with only three, but I would like to hear from them guys because again, they are, I agree a hundred percent. They are local, um, and Stevenson's been local. We went with them local too. So let's offer it to four and see who shows up.
Uh, just some other, um, housekeeping business. Originally, uh, wanted to put that on your next agenda. And frankly, I'm not sure we could get, uh, commitment from the firms that quickly. Uh, Karen is going to be out of town as well, and she definitely needs to be here as we do this. So I'd like to schedule these interviews for the September fourth committee, the whole meeting. Uh, and then move forward from there. That still gives us plenty of time for you to have a decision by the end of this fiscal year, which is good, uh, so that when we, uh, enter October one, we know where we're headed. Uh, let me see here. Let me see. There was something else in here, but I think that's it.
So nine four committee of the, committee of the whole.
Right.
Good. Sound good, guys?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Administrator, controller's report.
Okay, um, first thing I was going to mention, which you all noticed, I know coming in was the window projects in the west side is, uh, nearing completion now. Uh, just to give you an idea of the logic on the order of things, uh, the probate court actually had, uh, block of time this week where replacing those windows wouldn't disrupt court operations. So that's why we jumped over to the west side. Uh, the contractor, um, did talk about the district court as well. We have a similar situation coming up here in the next few weeks where their activity is slow enough that the window replacement isn't going to bother court activity. So that will be the next, uh, group now. The way our building is situated, you might've noticed even on the west side, that a lot of the windows go from the first floor all the way up to the second floor. So that's why they end up being done all at once that way. So when we do the district court windows, everybody on this level who faces Houghton Avenue will also be impacted. So that's equalization, the clerk, uh, treasurer. Uh, and I think that's everybody on that level. Now, also in the lobby, that's going to present some interesting logistics because they're going to, uh, do that, redo the entrance as well. So that section is going to be done last so that they can complete both of those projects at once. That leaves the circuit court and we had a meeting with, uh, the circuit court administrator last week. They have that figured out too. I can't tell you exactly what the dates were, but that's one of the last ones that'll be done. Those windows are actually facing uh, over the first floor wing out there. So they've got, you know, different kind of, uh, dynamic working that when they were but they're moving right along. I suspect it's going to be done by the end of this year, even though we gave them until the end of next year to do it. So all, uh, looking quite well with that. I'm actually very impressed with the way the east side turned out. Uh, I think, uh, the material that was used and thanks to the many staff who chose the color scheme because I have no talent in that arena. Uh, but I think everybody did a great job of selecting, uh, that, um, siding and we will, uh, complete the project by having our maintenance supervisor repaint the frame around the doors to the same black color that is around our windows now. So we'll have complete coordination all the way around. Uh, so as mentioned earlier, this should significantly reduce our heating and cooling bills. Time will tell. Uh, but between that, the boilers and the lights that are done, I don't know that there's any more this county could do to uh, bring this, uh, building up to as best, uh, energy compliant ranking as it can possibly get. Uh, and, uh, second, as though there aren't enough RFPs to be thinking about right now, tonight at the opioid settlement advisory committee meeting, we have seven proposals that we can to do opioid remediation work with the opioid settlement dollars that are coming into the county. Unfortunately, one of the proposals was submitted and landed seven minutes after the deadlines. Uh, rules are, uh, it's not even considered. It will go back to the proposer. But fear not, this is a multi-year program that will be future opportunities for, uh, this proposal to be resubmitted and reconsidered. We have a roughly, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, um, uh, revenue stream for the eighteen years, uh, moving forward. We don't have to stick to that amount. So if a project came in that, that would be very timely for us to do, we can still do those projects, but just understanding that toward the end of this eighteen-year cycle, there may not be as much uh, revenue there left to continue to support the projects. But hopefully by then they will become commonplace with our providers and will have that pretty well incorporated in everybody's day-to-day functioning. So very excited to look at that. Committee will look at the proposals tonight. We'll just simply open them. Future meeting, we will get into the details. Uh, the committee will make a recommendation to you as to which proposals to accept. Uh, and we'll be off and running. Our goal was to have this uh, underway by October one. It looks like we're going to meet that goal.
Nice, nice job, guys.
And lastly, on the whole, uh, RFP Palooza, we've got two more that will be issued uh, likely here in the coming week. The first one, dare we say, at the snow removal RFP that we send out every year. And the second one, in working with the Veterans Affairs, uh, we did figure out a way to support the HVAC improvements that they need to do on their building. Uh, using primarily some of their fund balance, which is dedicated solely to the Veterans Affairs issues. So very, very, uh, appropriate use of those dollars. Uh, so that RFP will go out and we expect probably along late September, early October, you'll see results and we'll be uh, making, um, um, contracts hopefully on both of those.
Any questions for Tim?
No.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah. We got the air conditioning. Is there somebody we can get that can come in here? And get us so they can control it?
Yeah, so we do, um, have a couple of, uh, things in the works right now. Chris is doing all he can to keep up on the the circuit boards that deal that work with the, um, air handlers on the roof of this building. Every time there's a power surge, we seem to lose one or two of those units and it's been a challenge, uh, to keep those in stock only because they quit making replacement parts about ten years ago. So a couple of things we've got, uh, that we're doing is, uh, first, we're talking with the Honeywell people who actually run these air handlers. And, uh, Chris is getting advice from them on how to keep the things running and so we, we can keep the temperatures controlled in here well. Bottom line though is those units are probably at end of life. And so we'll be looking at probably, uh, a rough quote from Honeywell or another vendor to give us an idea of what it's going to look like to replace those units. And we'll be talking at a future date on just exactly how to program that into our budget so that we get them replaced. Bottom line is they need to be replaced. Uh, even, uh, the group that did our boilers here recognized that. In fact, I think when Ron was in here, one of our meetings said he's only taking us so far that there are other steps, other components connected to that system that we need to look at. Uh, this is, um, not atypical of a building, uh, of a government's, uh, uh, in the government's realm here because, uh, you know, it's very easy to delay some of these uh, capital improvements that, that we really should be making. And in some cases, we're able to, uh, project when that's going to be and get some planning together. But this is one I don't think anybody thought about. And so here we are with, uh, you know, systems that's, that are multiple decades old and now we're going to have to do something. So hopefully thinking, uh, ahead, we'll get a good capital improvements plan together. We'll be able to project when these things are going to happen a little bit better than what we have.
Comment.
Go ahead.
I, I find it hard to believe when you say that we haven't projected these type of things. I mean, there's a reason we have a, a building maintenance man and his job should be to know the current condition of this, these mechanicals and then report back to us where that's at. So this shouldn't be a surprise. Um, it is good that financially the county is heading in the right direction. Um, where we can look at making these improvements without having ARPA funding and what have you. Also not using tax revolving money. We know the real purpose of that is to use that money for these type of things. But again, I've said this before, we've talked about this, Tim. I would like to see more consistency out of our maintenance department. That's why this person is hired. These things should not be surprises.
Any other comments? Elected officials and department head reports. Kirk?
Brett Gilner, your Oldham County Clerk. Um, I have great news. Tuesday was the deadline to file for the November election and nobody filed, so we're not having a November election. No, no, no November election. Um, you had mentioned the claims for the election reimbursement. Um, I wrapped up everything with the townships and with the school last week, um, hand-delivered the bill or invoice, um, to Karen Randall and within a week we were paid in full. So all of those invoices that you guys saw, those are all paid for and we have received our portion. So I basically just wrapped up election for the year, which is good relief, um, because next year we'll be busy. Um, other than that, thank you for approving the MERS delegates. Um, Ashley, my new employee, she's the one who is going along with Tracy and, uh, both of them I think will be really good representation for us. Um, she was really interested in it. So thank you for that. Um, that's it.
Commissioner?
Karen Pavlowski, your Oldham County Treasurer. Um, thank you for approving the agreement for the, um, law firm that's handling our settlement is definitely in the best interest of Oldham County. So thank you for that. Um, you had mentioned during claims, my eleven thousand dollar bill for title searches. Just so you know, title check. Here's registered deeds to do that title search work. So that money does come back to us, just so you know. The majority of it. So just to know, it's a circle of money. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Registered deeds?
Good afternoon. I thought I'd come today and explain my reports.
Nice.
So the first one, that's a report by account number. The top two numbers are what stays with the county. I'm sorry, top three. The rest are paid out to other entities. The, um, tax certification goes to the treasurer's office. Automation goes to my fund. The remit to the state is what does the, uh, remit and the corners surveys. And the transfer tax state goes to the state and the county transfers tax stays here with the county. Last month, there were just shy. So the second, the second report shows what type of documents and how many documents we recorded within that month. The third report is the transfer tax report. And if you look on the last page, it shows that we did just shy of we had eleven million one hundred thousand dollars in real estate transactions last month.
Wow.
The third one is the credit notice. Our records are online for the public to use. And this is what we receive from Fiddler for the tapestry usage. And the third one is just, or the last one is just the document volume dashboard to see what it's like throughout the destination.
Questions for Denise?
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report too. You've been giving it to us for a while now.
Okay.
Thanks Denise. Any other elected officials, department heads in the room? Sheriff, come on up.
I have nothing to say. I'm over here.
I see. I wonder if you wanted to talk? Sheriff, sheriff, under sheriff? No. Anybody on the phone? Elected officials, department heads? Want to give a report? Matters from the floor. Commissioners may take this opportunity to introduce matters not otherwise discussed on the agenda. Any commissioners?
Have none.
motions for adoption. Commissioners may o- offer the other motions not otherwise taken up as part of the agenda. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Sorbuck?
I attended, uh, Monday Horton Township and Edwards Township, both of them meet on Monday. Horton has changed their meeting time to seven o'clock now and Edward meets at seven thirty. So I was at Horton for a short period of time, gave my report there and left Edwards Township, um, lengthy discussions in regards to, they're looking at changing the BSNA. Right now, other than the treasurer, they're using QuickBooks and they long discussion and, um, they had their audit report. So they got a clean audit, unmodified opinion. Very happy about that. They enacted some, uh, township ordinances. They do their own zoning and stuff. So there was a lot of discussion in regards to that because they have a problem with people camping on vacant land and bringing imported johns and they're an eyesore and not getting taken care of. Anyway, they passed some orders in regards to that. As Commissioner Scott said, Parks and Rec, we met this morning out at the, uh, Game Refuge Nature Park. Uh, we were out there for two hours actually. Um, we had our meeting, then we did a walk around and stuff. So, uh, very productive, uh, discussions. We had a little, uh, laid some ideas down. And again, I appreciate, um, number one, Commissioner Scott being actively, uh, pursuing the grant from Consumers Energy and, uh, the support from the committee for that. So that concludes my report, ma'am chair.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Uh, Rose Township had one. I missed that. I went to West Branch.
I forgot West Branch. Thank you.
And like I said, we were jumping pretty hard about the twenty-four seven. Other than that, pretty good meeting.
Do you have anything to add to West Branch?
No, I did. We already brought up the concerns when the sheriff was here, the West Branch Township had. So and again, I have it written down and I just skipped right over it. So thank you, Roger, for.
Commissioner Sorbuck? Or excuse me, Commissioner Scott?
Yep. Um, did hit the city, city of West Branch meeting a week ago was interesting. Um, uh, Foster Township was this week. Uh, uh, even had a special meeting uh, a week or so ago and I was able to attend that one too. Um, and, um, uh, Foster Township and along with Oldham Township, my own township, they have quite a few new members on the board. So it's, it's, uh, a learning experience for everybody. Uh, I think they all agree that once they sit in the chair, it looks a lot different than sitting on the other side. But, uh, um, Parks and Rec. Yep, very well. Just like, uh, Mark said. I missed the, uh, health department meeting that Mark, you attended, right?
Yes, I do.
Earlier.
Yep, that was, um,
Um. Yep, um I got uh airport next week and. Oh, I attended road commission yesterday also. They had a pretty uh. Busy meeting, a lot of uh, a lot of public. Public there and a lot of public input. And uh, and it's good to see, there was a couple of different uh. Uh. Township supervisors that are also both in your district.
Roads and Blight, that were the two things you hear about over and over again.
Uh, yeah, and we heard about both of those yesterday too, it's from, they're not only those townships, but the other ones, yeah. Yeah, so. I didn't get into my uh two-year-old planning speech, but. I can, I didn't get in, engage in too many speeches. Um. No, uh, I got airport and uh Ogumah Township next week, so.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, budget and LE meetings, uh we've already had, but we discussed those thoroughly at our last meeting. Um, I was at the road commission meeting yesterday also. Um, agree with Commissioner Scott there, uh Mills Township, we had a meeting this past Tuesday. Lot of really good things going there, you guys have heard me repeatedly say the new board. Uh, is really working strong together, very consistent, um. They approved upgrades on a number of the gravel roads, anybody that spends any time over there, Mills Township knows there's a lot of gravel roads. Obviously, we would like to pave a lot of those roads by, but. Getting prices from uh the road commission, there's engineering and ditching, and it just costs so much money, so. They've got to be more consistent on at least keeping the gravel roads um upgraded, and they are spending some money to do that, that'll be a fifty-fifty split with the road commission. And a lot of that work will get done still this fall, so that was good. Uh, wage increased to our maintenance workers over there, uh Mills, Mills Township has a lot of beautiful parks, we've got a great crew over there working. And they're working really hard, they're all getting um uh increasing wages. Uh, bids for the new hall, we we bought that new hall a while back, uh there's renovation work gonna get done. Uh, they had a date set, they didn't receive enough builds, so they extended that, uh I believe another sixty days. So probably will be spring to summer of twenty. Twenty-six by the time we get moved into the new hall. Uh, Blight Officer, uh you guys have met Steve, he comes a lot of our meetings, Steve's doing a great job, and the nice thing about it is, is he's being consistent. One thing that Mills Township's needed forever with their Blight Officer is consistency, and he has the full support of the. Township board behind him, a lot of good things going on there. Very good to see. Um, as we all know, we got our county fair going on right now, we have a beautiful county fair, um I've got a ton of meetings coming up here in the next week. It's kind of a heart of lot in my meetings, so I'll have a big report next time. I I just wanna make one comment, though, due to uh the one resolution tonight that never made to the table. Um, our county residents have a millage that they passed. Um, for animal control, um we know the demand is there, we've talked with nine one one, they've shown us the demand, we had an animal control officer who sadly is retiring. Which is a big time bummer, but we have to move forward. Demand's there, obviously the residents want it, they're paying for it. I feel we've been a lot better positioned to offer a full-time job to get someone in here who's gonna be able to stick around and have some sustainability. Tim's made it very clear in the budget that the money is there for a full-time position. I was pretty surprised by the fact that it didn't make it to the table tonight, I think it's extremely important, uh I know right now we have our animal control officer to the end of the month. The sheriff department has been very proactive here in the last few days to get that out there, it sounds like they have six um applicants already. But the demand is there. Our county residents are paying for it, we have the money to pay for a full-time officer, I just don't understand why we would not do that. I'm done.
I attended two township meetings, Logan Township. Uh, they talked about, they did new business, um consumers, they talked about a right-of-way, the electric coming into the township. Hall over there, consumers is working on uh placing some poles, because they have electricity coming in numerous different ways, and they would like to. Have it in, coming in one specific way, so, because they do lose power quite a bit out there, so. They approved away, a right-of-way for consumers, talking about roads for next year. Kind of putting that on the radar. It gave some trash refunds out, parking lot, they're doing some renovations out there to the hall, it looks really nice. Uh, they did that primarily with their ARPA funds, nothing really big going on there. Richland Township, I attended that as meeting as well, um campground's going very well out there, um that's at Hardwood Lake. Uh, their township hall as well, they did quite a few upgrades, some renovations, that that hall's looking top-notch as well. They have a new treasurer's out, treasurer out there, the old uh previous one resigned, and they have a new one. Getting him uh new computer. And some updates. And the other big conversation over there at Richland was the library over there. It's kind of an interesting concept, the village, the village which is inside of Richland Township. Owned half of the library and Richland owned, or the building itself, half and half. The building burnt down, as we are all aware, um. The village is looking at taking over the library primarily solely. They got the insurance monies for this, and they have a quote to rebuild. The insurance money was uh in the policy was in the. Uh, village's name, even though the building was half-owned by both of them, so it's gonna be some interesting things that take place moving forward, so. It's just conversation about that, right now, it does sound like the good news is, is is in the end, there will be a new and improved library, they do a lot of programs over there. Um, internet, which is scarce over in that area, but the 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 library itself is utilized quite a bit, so good news is, is it's going to be rebuilt. Um, just gonna be some conversations, how that take place, how it's gonna take place. So I will keep you informed on that, I missed a nine-one-one meeting last night, I was working out at the fair, as uh Commissioner Wiltie said, the Ogumah County Fair is up and going, that's a huge event for this community. Tonight is the livestock auction for the youth. Um, Michigan Works, I attended that as well, went over some financials. They are greatly concerned as far as reimbursements uh in next year's budget, so there'll be more to come on that, not sure what cuts are gonna take place, but. They're definitely staying um up to date on on where they're at financially, and they are anticipating some pretty significant changes, so. That's it for me.
One last thing, MTA next week.
Yeah, at Mills, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Mills Township, at the Chamber.
At the Chamber.
What day is day and time, if you can say that out loud?
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Time?
Six o'clock. When?
At the Chamber, Tuesday next week is the nineteenth.
It's now, it's two weeks.
Following week, I'm sorry, two weeks, next week.
Twenty-six.
Right.
At the Chamber, six o'clock, we'll have food, beverages.
Uh, on our iPads, there's also committee meeting minutes from law enforcement in the transfer transit advisory committee, those are uh. On our iPads for review, I appreciate that, thank you. General public comment, is there gonna be any, any business after we go into closed session? Okay, so we can announce that for sure. Any general public comment in the room, and this is any subject matters, again, the same rules apply, but you're able to speak about anything, so any public comment, come on up, sir. How are you?
I'm good so far.
Fantastic, your name, sir?
I'm Rick Maynard, West Branch Township, the one audience member in the meeting last night.
Perfect, you have the floor.
What I'm. Since we got the city patrol in our area, they only do it forty hours a week, they can't do it. On a full-time basis, twenty-four seven. I have not seen the sheriff come down through this up when they're going north on Fairview Road, the living, Fairview Road. Before anybody says talk to sheriff, I have talked to him twice. And then the sheriff wants. And all that then happened, because the speed on our road is terrible. But they parked the car, my driveway once, and the people just pumped a horn and flipped it off as they were going by. Then they set up a car down the road, south of me. And they pulled over one car. I haven't seen nobody down there yet, like I said, when they're going north. Where they're going, I don't know, I don't wanna make speculations on that. And I heard, and I hope it ain't true, but I heard. Because of the city patrol in the area, the sheriff does not, he's not gonna put a car in the area. And I'm one of the ones that said they're not gonna put a car in the area. And we don't have some. Twenty-four seven road patrol. I'd like to see it taken off my taxes. And I don't wanna pay for some that we're not getting, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item sixteen, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session to consider strategy connected with negotiation or collective bargaining agreement. Under MCL fifteen point two-six-eight paragraph C.
Support. Motion Commissioner Serebik, support from Commissioner Mayhew and Wiltie. Uh. Roll call vote. Jenny David? Yes. Roger Mayhew?
Yeah.
Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Mark Serebik?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
And there'll be no business after. Okay, we have a motion to go to closed session, thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Come again.
Don't be a stranger. Don't, don't, don't come just because there is a hot topic.
Back in the open session, motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Support, oh in favor?
I, yes.
We are adjourned.
Have a good day, everyone, goodbye.
I'm just trying to get my calendar.